Hey there. Want to make your voice heard at a Board of Supervisors meeting? We're all ears. Here's how you can get involved.
First, hop online and look at the agendas. This will give you the scoop on what's coming up before the Board. Each agenda item includes a brief description of the issue, the recommendations, and potential impacts. If you need more detail, check out the detailed reports online. Those are called "Board Letters." Then decide if you want to speak at Tuesday's General Legislative Session or Wednesday's Land Use Session.
You'll have three opportunities to have your say. Let's start with non-agenda public comment.
This is your chance to talk about things that aren't on the agenda, but try and keep your topic related to county government. For non-agenda public comments, you can speak at either the Tuesday or Wednesday session, but not both. So pick your day accordingly.
And keep in mind, the Board can't act on the spot. They'll refer your comments to the Chief Administrative Officer, who will look into the issue.
Last thing. The Board will hear from the first 10 speakers, five in person and five by phone at the beginning of the session. Then all the remaining speakers will get their chance to speak after the discussion items. During the Consent Agenda, the Board handles a bunch of routine items with one vote. If you want to comment on an item, keep it simple. For example, "I'm John Doe, speaking on Item 5, and I agree with approving the contract." Discussion items are the main event where the Board debates before making a decision. They'll hear from supporters first, then those against.
And if you have documents, hand them to the deputy clerk when it's your turn to speak at the podium.
If you want to speak, you need a speaker slip. White slips are for non-agenda comments. Turn these in before we hear from the first speaker. Green or pink slips are for specific items. Get these in before public comment begins.
And please turn in your speaker slip early. If you don't turn it in before it's due, you won't be able to speak to the Board.
Now, you get two minutes to speak, but if lots of people want to talk, it might get cut to one minute. So you might want to consider writing two sets of comments, one for two minutes, another one for one. That way, if time's cut, you won't be scrambling. There's also a countdown clock at the podium to keep you on track.
Once you're at the podium, stay on topic. Stick to the current agenda item. If you stray off-topic, you might get a gentle nudge to get back to the point. Keep your comments related to the agenda items' recommendations, because that's what the Board is relying on to make a decision. Also, speak directly to the Board. They're the ones making the decision.
When your time's up, it's up. Overstaying might mean getting muted or even asked to leave. Now for some ground rules. For safety, keep aisles and doorways clear. If there isn't a seat, head across the hall to Room 302 or the fourth-floor balcony to watch the meeting. Respect is huge. Everyone should feel heard. That means you, other speakers, and the Board of Supervisors. Disruptive behavior gets one warning, and after that, a deputy sheriff might show you the door. So let's keep it respectful.
Your voice matters, and we want to hear from you. Remember, we're all here to make a difference.
Good morning. I will now reconvene the San Diego County Board of Supervisors meeting for the Land Use Legislative Session. Supervisor Anderson is out sick today. We hope he feels better and wish him well. Ryan, please call the role for today's session.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. Supervisor Montgomery-Steph?
Here.
Supervisor Desmond?
Here.
And Vice Chair Lawson Reamer?
Here. We will now proceed with non-agenda public communication. This is an opportunity for the public to address the Board on subject matters within the Board's jurisdiction, but not an item on the meeting agenda. The only action that the Board may take is a referral to the Chief Administrative Officer. Under the Board's rules, speakers can only speak once per meeting for non-agenda public communication, either at yesterday's General Legislative Session or today's Land Use Legislative Session, but not both sessions. Speakers may select which session to address the Board at their own convenience. To better facilitate the meeting, for non-agenda public comment, we will have five speakers in person, five speakers by phone. The rest of non-agenda public communication will be heard at the close of today's session. Additionally, in accordance with the Board rules, in order to ensure timely completion of today's agenda, for any discussion item with 20 or more speakers, individuals will have one minute to share their opinion at the chair's discretion. A reminder that according to Rule 4A, members of the public that are non-English-speaking and need interpretation assistance will get twice the amount of time for their comments. And a final reminder, according to the Board's Rules of Procedures, audience members shall not whistle, clap, stomp feet, or do anything that disrupts the proceedings. If you disrupt the meeting, you will be given one warning. After that one warning, if you disrupt the meeting again, you will be directed to leave the chamber for the remainder of the meeting. Ryan, can you call the speakers?
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 14 total requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, five individuals in person, and nine requesting to speak by phone. For those that requested to speak by phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers. Again, in accordance with the Board's Rules and Procedures, we'll hear from the first five speakers in person. As your name is called, if you could please come forward and stand on the arrows and tell it's your turn to speak at the podium, then you'll have two minutes to address the Board. And if you could please begin by stating your name for the audio record, I'd like to invite for the first three individuals, Robert Gurman, Cesar Javier, Parita Javier. You're going to go ahead and start, Robert. I know we're having technical difficulties, but...
Having a gun held to my head and being bullied by county airports on the American lease at Carlsbad Airport can be Supervisor's Reamer's feelings, but it looked to me it was more of a case of intimidation. Was this a result of former Chairwoman Nora Vargas's resignation due to death threats? I hope not. I have submitted these slides to help you understand what you voted on. FAA grants are the number-one way to preserve an airport, even if you don't need them. Get them before the airports do, as one state aviation administrator told me. FAA has to negotiate, but they negotiate with aviation business at the local airport. Example of this self-dealing system was for Lindbergh to receive their grant money for the $4 billion expansion. The FAA required the airport authority to move the flight schools to Gillespie and Montgomery airports. Quote, "We didn't want the schools anyway. They just fly around in circles, so we gave them to Montgomery and Gillespie." This is discrimination in negotiations against flight schools and the citizens around Gillespie and Montgomery without notification or input. Why now for the American lease? Because communities are getting fed up with the FAA and these neighborhood airports. Communities are demanding their elected officials just say no to grant money. Too many strings attached. The airports are toxic and a waste of communities' limited resources. Airports are an island in a sea of a community. Citizens and emergency services have to go around them in an emergency. Airports are a liability, not an asset, and should be treated as such. Any questions? Did it ever come up, my slideshow? No? We tested it before the meeting, so... Questions? 11, 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. Thank you.
All right. Not seeing Cesar Javier, Parita Javier, coming to the podium. I'll call the final two speakers, Noel Trao and Robert Pitt. Not seeing any movement in the chamber. We'll go ahead and go to our callers. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. Again, I'd like to remind the callers they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Madison. I come today to raise an important concern regarding the draft EIR for 25 potential new cannabis businesses in the unincorporated areas of the county. It is essential that we fully consider the environmental impact, specifically in terms of greenhouse gas emissions, before considering allowing such a rapid expansion. Cannabis cultivation is an energy-intensive process. Indoor cultivation operations, often the norm, require massive amounts of energy to power high-intensity lighting systems, ventilation, and climate control. This type of energy consumption is alarming when you consider the fact that these operations often rely on non-renewable energy sources, contributing significantly to greenhouse gas emissions. In fact, cannabis cultivation in California alone is estimated to use up to 2% of the state's total electricity, an unsustainable and alarming figure. Allowing 25 new cannabis businesses in our county would only exacerbate this issue and hinder our efforts to reduce emissions and combat climate change. Beyond cultivation, the transportation of cannabis products adds to the environmental burden. As these businesses grow, so too does the need for distribution, which typically involves long-distance travel by fossil-powered vehicles. The increased transportation will lead to more traffic, air pollution, and a growing carbon footprint, further undermining our collective efforts to build a cleaner, more sustainable San Diego. We must ask ourselves whether we are truly willing to prioritize a growing industry that has a negative impact on our environment, especially when we are working so hard to mitigate the effects of climate change and reduce emissions across all sectors. In light of these concerns, I strongly urge this Board to reconsider approving the expansion of the cannabis industry in San Diego County. Instead, let us focus on industries that align with our sustainability goals, reduce environment...
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Becky Rapp, and I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you regarding land use. Last week, the Planning and Development Services Department released a cannabis program environmental impact report draft for public review. Two virtual meetings have been held, with the third one scheduled for tonight. One reoccurring topic of concern is the distant separation between pot shops and nursing homes. Pro-pot proponents would argue that nursing home residents need their medicine and therefore need to be in close proximity to a pot shop. What they're not telling you is that 75% of nursing homes are federally funded, and pot is still federally illegal. It's unlawful for a resident to smoke or consume marijuana in any form in or around a nursing home. Marketing pot to nursing home residents is not only illegal, but poses a significant threat to their health. The industry would love nothing more than to sell more drugs to vulnerable residents, promising the fountain of youth. If you take a deep dive into public health policy and research, you'll find that marijuana only complicates physical and mental health problems for the majority of residents, and drug interactions are a major concern. There's an alarming study published in JAMA: Internal Medicine, as it describes how marijuana poisons are on the rise among people 65 years of age and older. In the study, 2,322 ED visits were examined over eight years. Poisonings doubled after permitting the sale of marijuana flower and then tripled after permitting the sales marijuana edibles. The article states that this data should be a wake-up call to all healthcare practitioners, policymakers, and government officials. The fact that seniors are experiencing marijuana overdose in increasing numbers should be a concern. Please consider how...
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Good morning, Board. My name is Kathleen Lippett, and I am concerned about the health of our unincorporated communities, the air, their water, the soil, and the 500,000 residents there who oppose the county's unilateral decision to impose a commercial marijuana footprint under the guise of whatever, whether it's on behalf of those who choose to use marijuana as an unhealthy and unsafe form of recreation or to treat whatever ailments that are not proven by the FDA or any other legitimate health organization to be of value. So the areas of controversy that were identified by assent your counsel, your consultant for this EIR, which, by the way, should have been done first step, not waiting until the third, until you already allowed those five grandfathered retailers and cultivation foot operations there. But now that you're doing it, they have identified as serious and significant impacts: increased traffic and agricultural problems, introduction of non-native species, and the water. The noise has significant and unavoidable construction noise. Hydrology and water, significant and unavoidable, compromises to our groundwater. Significant and unavoidable air quality problems. And significant and unavoidable air aesthetics. Please do not continue with going down the same road. Please, the ones that are there already, they are already allowed to increase their footprint to another 10,000 square feet, both for their retail outlet or...
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Chair Lawson Reamer. My name is Teri Ann Skelly, and I attend my county planning group, who is extremely unhappy about having any more marijuana storefronts in our beloved Back County. I work in public health and youth mentor and tutoring programs. I support the county's vision of a just, sustainable, and resilient future for all, specifically those communities historically left behind. My youth mentoring and tutoring programs in the county include teens from very diverse backgrounds. On their behalf, I came today to report that it is these very teens from diverse backgrounds who experience health inequities, especially as they have been targeted by tobacco and marijuana companies. The African-American Tobacco Control Leadership Council released more excellent research regarding how, and I quote, "Big tobacco strategically targeted blacks and the deadly consequences," end quote. Now, they are taking a close look at the role of big marijuana as well in creating health inequities through their promotion of smoking and vaping. Research continues to grow regarding the role of these products in creating cancer and chronic disease-related health inequities among minority populations. I respectfully suggest that the county's enforcement efforts to eliminate intoxicating products, sometimes nicotine, sometimes marijuana, sometimes CBD, be increased, and that no new business permits be allowed for tobacco and marijuana businesses in the unincorporated areas. They only harm those populations that you most strive to serve. Thank you for hearing my concerns this morning.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
Good morning, members of the Board. My name is Megan Stewart, and I would like to thank the Board for acknowledging American Heart Month in yesterday's meeting and inform you all that this week is specifically known as Love Your Heart Week, which is a vital initiative that brings organizations together across the United States and Mexico to provide free blood pressure screenings and promote heart health. As we continue to raise awareness about heart disease prevention and the importance of cardiovascular health, I believe that it is crucial that we address an emerging concern regarding marijuana use and its potential impact on heart health. While marijuana is often perceived as a harmless substance, recent research has highlighted its serious effects on the cardiovascular system. A recent study published in the Journal of the American Heart Association and supported by the National Institutes of Health analyzed data from over 430,000 American adults, and the findings are extremely alarming. Daily marijuana use was associated with a 25% increased likelihood of a heart attack and a 42% increased likelihood of stroke. Even weekly use showed increased cardiovascular risks. These findings held true regardless of tobacco use or other pre-existing health conditions. Public health education and policy decisions should align with the latest science, protecting the well-being of San Diego residents. As we celebrate Love Your Heart Week, let's commit to promoting heart health in all aspects, including raising awareness of the hidden dangers of marijuana use. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes with the request for non-agenda public communication this morning. And again, all the remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session.
Okay, thank you. We will now proceed with the formation of the Consent Agenda. That's Items 1 and 2. Given that Item 2 requires four votes and Supervisor Anderson is absent, we will continue Item 2 to the next Board of Supervisors Land Use Legislative Session, scheduled for Wednesday, February 26, 2025. This means that Item 1 is the only remaining item on the Consent Agenda for today. All items on Consent are routine and will be acted upon with one motion. Individuals will be able to comment on the Consent Agenda after the Supervisors pull the items they would like for discussion. Would any of my colleagues like to pull any items for discussion or have any comments on the Consent Agenda? Supervisor Montgomery-Steph?
No, and I'll move the Consent Agenda.
Supervisor Desmond? Okay, thank you. We will now turn to public comment. As a reminder for speakers, your comments must be related to those items on the Consent Agenda only. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. And again, just like to note for the record, Item 2 is being continued to the meeting of February 26, so you may only speak to the continuance of that item. We have five total requests to speak on items on the Consent Agenda, all coming via phone. For any individual that called or requested to speak via phone, if you could, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. I'll give you a moment to do so. And now, we will hear from those that requested to speak by phone. Again, just a reminder, when it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. I'd like to remind the callers that they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. And we'll go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Hello, this is Catherine Rhodes, and I was actually speaking on both Number 1 and Number 2. number two, because one of them is that you're going to use some of the money for the trees from the general fund, not much, and the other one is that you're going to use some money from the road fund. And so what I wanted to tell you is that, as I mentioned in your periodic financial report for December, you have $604 million in cash in your general revenue fund that you can use for any project, that you're using just a little bit, but you still have so much money there. But one of the, and then the other fund is the road fund, that's Fund 11100, and that actually has $241 million in this fund. There's always so much money in this fund, and it never really gets spent that much. Sometimes you put it that you're going to be spending some of it, but with this $241 million, you could do so much more. I believe you could probably pave any road you want to. But I was thinking that you guys could do, you know, because of the, because of the Highway 67 in Ramona and how they're going to have to widen it at one point for emergency exit, they said that they wanted to put in a bike lane, and so one part of it is that they have to buy the right of way along that. And so I was thinking that some of this money people could look into to actually bind the right of way for all the emergencies, for the emergency escape route out of Ramona in that part, with the $241 million just sitting here. And every year, these funds increase and increase, the cash sitting in these funds increase and increase. So when people tell you that you're using all this money and you shouldn't be, you know, and you don't have enough-
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Has anyone measured the amount of carbon dioxide generated annually in this county by wildfires burning up the trees you plant? This is number one, because that will probably show a real net zero effect. X money wasted on trees that get burned up, and the result offsets the carbon dioxide you save by mandating things like S and E B, which by the way, are bad for us as species, our houses, nations, and lives, a lot worse than carbon dioxide. And how many of our dollars have you forked over to the climate change people, whether told explicitly it's for climate change or not? Climate change is driven by many factors, of them carbon dioxide. We have told you over and over again, things like volcanic activity, geologic or seismic activity, geomagnetic activity, which if poles and climate alike are bigger contributors to climate change, or plastics, aerosols, what are you doing about these? Tree planting can be good. The whole tree planting program as it relates to decarbonization needs to be rethought. So, no contrast. And number two, 860 thou per mile for this .3 mile paving job in El Con is pretty pricey. That's a 188, 1.88 mil for that tiny job in National City, but since the city's approved, I'll concur. It is necessary to keep our roads in good shape. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. We'll go to our next speaker.
Yeah, of course, it's good to plant trees, but I mean, are you guys ever really going to be able to plant enough? Because what you tend to do is get behind and work and not really be able to accomplish all that needs to be done. And when you're working completely against that with bringing in electric vehicles and things that are actually more detrimental to the earth and will never save any kind of, you know, greenhouse gases, because how they're made, it's causing more than they could ever save in their lifetime, you should really be not, you know, working against yourselves by implementing things that are going to, you know, totally be pointless, especially when you're saying it's going to, you know, save greenhouse gases when it's emitting immense amounts. So you'd actually have to plant probably, you know, 10,000, 20,000 trees per year just to make up for the fact that we're going to be implementing these things. And as we talk about the roads and, you know, doing flurry fill and different things like that, yeah, you should bring this item back, and not just because Joel's not there, which I don't know why he was at a meeting the day before yesterday, and then now he can't show up, kind of telling. But you should be charging an extra tax for electric vehicles because they're damaging the roads because of, due to their weight and all of that. So, you know, when you want to implement something that's actually more destructive, not only to our infrastructure but the planet, there should be an extra tax, and that should be used to mitigate all of the problems that it causes, just to have those in our county. And you guys are going to be pushing for everybody, or you are pushing for pretty much everyone to, before then we get out of our cars, because that's coming down the pipe too, but that's definitely-
Thank you. Your time is up. And Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on items on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a motion by Supervisor Montgomery-Stapp, with a second by Supervisor Desmond. Please vote.
And Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present in voting night.
Okay, we now move on to discussion. So we begin with discussion item three, Traffic Advisory Committee. We will begin with public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. We have five total requests to speak, all coming via phone. Also, just like to note for the record, we did not receive any ecomments for this item. For any individual that has requested to speak on this item by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you, and we'll go ahead and be, and we'll go ahead and give you a moment to do so. All right, we'll go ahead and hear from those that are requested to speak by phone. Again, when it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. I'd like to remind you again that the callers should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we'll go ahead and begin with our first caller.
I agree with the four-way stop intersection. Visibility issues were inspected and are not due to foliage, and it has a fair amount of public support. I'm disappointed that the resolution does not actually say how it is amended. Even if the amendment is an added location, the resolution should say so. Something else is amended, it should be in the resolution. Community input for sub-items 2B to 2D is not presented. These items seem to be based solely on the rounding down from average observed speed, which I think needs to be supported by community input. Why does some drivers go faster? Maybe there's actually good reason. Side approval standards seem well thought out, but it includes an exception for individual circumstances like emergencies and fire evacuations. So I approve of the side approval standards with amendment and sub-item 2A, although the resolutions need a lot of work. Disapproval of sub-items 2B to 2D is too one-sided and arbitrary. The resolution, the entire resolution needs to be rejected and amended. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
I don't know what you guys are doing to this on discussion. You know, like, go back and forth. Is it a consent item or a discussion item? I mean, I don't know why you flip-flop like you do, and like, why you'll put those other items on consent, it's just, you guys are very strange. And you could have taken all of the callers in the morning and not have to cut them off and to wait till the end, just because there was nobody in person. I mean, it should just be 10 speakers, period. Anyway, but this is all a ploy to like, get us out of our cars and like, slow us down so, so much that we're not going to be driving. To go 10 miles for, in Ramona, to reduce it from 45 to 35, I mean, it's just ridiculous the way that you guys, I mean, eventually, I mean, seriously, is it going to be like one mile an hour so that like, if you're walking, you're going to get a speeding ticket because it's going to be radar enforced? I mean, you know, there was a time when, when speeds used to go up so that people could, you know, like, actually get somewhere. Now you guys are just like, I mean, it's like, every time, you're just lowering and lowering the speed, and you're doing it at significant speeds, like, 10 miles an hour less, like, obviously, you're going to get a lot of radar enforcement, and so people are going to have to get tickets, and then you can bring in more revenue, we're up for the police or the sheriff, whatever. It's like, all of this is just a scam, and it's like, it's a trickle-down effect. Like, if you do that, then yeah, you'll bring in more money because people are probably going to be going speeding over that because they're not realizing that it's changed necessarily. So I don't know, I just, I see this as being something that eventually, I mean, you might as well be crawling around or, you know, just thinking about moving because we're not going to be able to go anywhere, because then we're going to be taxed for our carbon, and it's like, oh my gosh, how many times did you breathe today? We're going to have to charge you $100 each breath, so I mean, if you can afford to-
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Hello, this is Kelly McCormick. I'm a public health educator, and related to roads, especially when the county is considering increasing the number of marijuana businesses in the back country, it's important to keep in mind the relationship between marijuana use and driving fatalities and accidents and making the roads more unsafe. According to a AAA survey, nearly 15 million drivers said they've operated a vehicle within an hour of using marijuana. And last year, a survey was conducted by Virginia's Cannabis Control Agency that showed that 22% of drivers admitted to having driven stoned, quote, "a few times a year or more." Additionally, The New York Times recently published an article headlined "As Marijuana Use Grows, Effect on Road Safety Remains a Blind Spot," highlighting research on marijuana's effect on motor skills and reflexes among habitual and even occasional users. Of course, many studies have shown that cannabis can impede a driver's ability to respond quickly to obstacles and judge distance accurately. And the article goes on to describe many other ways that driving stoned is dangerous. So obviously, there's a serious public safety concern when people are this cavalier about driving under the influence of marijuana, and the lack of education about this issue places everyone at risk, pedestrians, cyclists, and other drivers. I would ask you to prioritize your thinking on this and the effects that marijuana use and increasing its use has on road safety. Thank you.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Do any of my colleagues have any comments on this item?
I'll move approval.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Desmond, a second by Supervisor Montgomery-Stapp. Please vote.
And Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present in voting night.
Thank you. Now we turn to item F. We will, sorry, yep, okay. We will now resume with non-agenda public comment. Ryan, can you please call the remaining individuals that requested to speak during non-agenda public communication?
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. We have four total requests to speak, all coming via phone, so we'll give those speakers a moment to call into the line. All right, and seeing the first caller call in, we'll go ahead and begin and hear from those that are requested to speak by phone. Again, when it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. I'd like to remind the callers they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking, and we'll go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. This is Anne Riddle. I called in yesterday to express my support for the strategic plan of the First Five Commission, and at that time, I drew our attention to one of its major sources of revenue, which was a voter-approved initiative that taxed cigarette and tobacco products. And the reason why the tax was used this way to fund the programs, the commission, First Five Commission support, is because we recognized how important the health of children five and under is, and how dramatic is the effect on them by firsthand, secondhand, and thirdhand smoke. We also know that children disproportionately live in what we call multi-unit housing or apartments, co-joined housing, and it would be a wonderful policy on the part of the county to have smoke-free multi-unit housing like we see in other counties across the state. I'm also concerned as a county planning group member regarding the recent EIR, the Environmental Impact Report that was released last week regarding bringing more than the five marijuana storefronts we already have to the back country. Those five marijuana storefronts are very prolific. They're active on social media, they have billboards, and they deliver all over the back country. Our planning group is shocked at the idea that we would need any more marijuana businesses back here in the back country. And the idea of a marijuana lounge where people would smoke and vape and then drive around on our very windy, poorly-lit back country roads, we find scary, but we are really amazed by the concept that somehow these extra marijuana businesses-
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Audrey Reynolds, Department of Animal Services. Vaughn Maurice and his department are perpetuating animal cruelty instead of ending it. This man has to go. These suffering animals were all observed in the barn of an east county sanctuary by an equine expert. A little donkey down on the ground, unable to stand, emaciated, starving to death, writhing in pain, its teeth and gums protruding, gasping for air while it died. Eight starving horses, all emaciated, unable to move, troubled standing in advanced dangers of founder with massive amounts of painful sores all over their frail bodies, their ribs and hips protruding. They were a body score of one on death's door. Two ponies massively obese, approaching death by founder, their hooves very long, thick and curled, in jeopardy of the coffin bone breaking through the soles of the feet. It's excruciatingly painful. A large draft horse observed in an outside paddock, extremely thin with excessively long feet. Most of the horses in the pastures are obese and at risk of founder. Many will graduate into the death's barn, it's just a matter of time. 265 cats were observed in November by another woman. She told me she witnessed cats with bloodied mouths eating out of cat food cans, may save the cats and cats with mange. So who is going to save these animals? Vaughn Maurice was handed this case on a silver platter. He was warned he would get only one chance at this, and he blew it. What could potentially be the largest cruelty case ever seen in San Diego County? Hundreds of animals. He was told explicitly what would be found and where to find it. These animals were on death's door back in October, denied human use in Asia by their owner to end their suffering. They're probably dead by now. These animals could not be removed or helped by DAS because Maurice spots the investigation. He failed to brief his officers on the information given to him, and the officers violated their own protocols of investigation. They left with no photos or videos. These suffering animals were all observed by an equine expert, someone that Maurice actually had available to him, but he failed to engage her. Sadly, her observations were just one day after DAS observed nothing. They were not given enough evidence for the DA to get a warrant.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
I would like to adjourn in the meeting today in honor of a good friend and brother who passed away, and he would attend these meetings or call in, and his name was James Anthony Ellis, we called him Jim. And I just found out that he passed away, and so I wanted to honor him and just remember him, and I know that you guys have heard his voice before and his writing. He was a very good writer. He had a lot of good things to say, probably not in your opinion, but he was a very intelligent man, and was found, you know, calling in and participating was very important to make sure that, you know, he could share with you guys his insights on how he felt about what was going on. And it's just really sad to know that he passed away, and I think that he deserves to be remembered and to be honored, and to, you know, I would just like to tell other people to, like, reach out to your friends and family and make sure that you're staying in touch with them, because you may not be aware of something that they're suffering from, and it may be the last time you would have talked to them or whatever, I don't know, and that's been very, it's hard to talk about this, because it's so sad and kind of sudden, and, but I just encourage people to stay in touch with those people that you love, because you never know when the last time you'll speak to them will be, and, you know, make sure you part ways on good terms, and, you know, I miss Jim, and I wish him the best.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Hello, my name is Rusty Shaqelford, C3 resident. A county employee asked if I was a robot. Ah, a robot? I was so shocked and offended that I struggled to address it at the time. As I have stated in the past, I am not able to speak quickly. This is partly due to major throat surgeries I have undergone in past years. I have since required a medical device to speak. I am very fortunate to be able to speak at all, especially under the county government's current discriminatory conditions. I wish the supervisors would care as much about the R T G M road horses as much as those they deem to be robots. It also seems ironic when so many public speakers have said that the supervisors do not listen to their concerns. Am I the only public commenter who has given the respect of a supervisor's ear? It is possible that the supervisors are missing out on knowledge. My favorite quote comes from Stephen Hawking. He said, "The greatest enemy of knowledge is not ignorance, it is the illusion of knowledge." Thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Lawson Reimer, that concludes the request for non-agenda public communication this morning.
Thank you very much. We will now proceed to closed session, which was continued from yesterday. Any reportable actions will be reported out after the conclusion of closed session. With that, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. The board will now recess into closed session to consider those matters listed under item 13 on yesterday's agenda. If there are any reportable actions, they will be reported out after the conclusion of closed session today, and the next regular meeting of the board will take place on February 25 at 9:00 a.m.